Good evening. Welcome to the Planning Commission meeting of June 1st, 2021. This is a virtual Planning Commission meeting as we continue to follow county orders to shelter in place and practice safe social distancing due to the threat of the novel coronavirus COVID-19. As a reminder, items will be taken in the order they are listed on the agenda. Before we get started, I want to briefly go over public comment procedures for the meeting for this, in case you are joining us for the first time. All public comment items, um, not on tonight's agenda, but for general use, come under our first public comments. At this point, you will have three minutes to speak on any subject. We ask that you are respectful as there are many different opinions within the room. So comments on other agenda items will be taken only when that item is called. You may use the raised hand feature on Zoom to speak. If you are joining the teleconference by phone, you may raise your hand by dialing nine and then six to unmute your microphone when prompted. Please only raise your hand at the time that the item on which you wish to speak is being called. Each speaker, once again, is allotted three minutes, but that time may be adjusted if we have quite a few speakers. So lastly, just a reminder, once again, we all have wonderful, uh, different perspectives. All of those first perspectives are valued by this commission. So we ask you to be respectful of your fellow speakers. Now, Ms. Xline, if we could go to roll call, please.
Yes. Um, good evening, Commissioners. So Commissioner Vandano is absent tonight. Commissioner Mounier.
Here.
Commissioner Martinez.
Here.
Commissioner Schu.
Here.
Vice Chair Hunter.
Here.
And Chair Radcliffe.
Here.
So for the purposes of this teleconference, I will state that I am the planning liaison and I am Sue Xline. And additional city staff who are attending this evening include Samuel Hughes, Assistant Planner, Evelyn Garcia, Assistant Planner, Lee Prince, Consultant City Attorney, and Christina Mateo, Administrative Secretary and Meeting Host.
Thank you, Ms. Xline. Uh, now we will move on to our next item, which is approval of the minutes, and we have no minutes for this, um, agenda. We will go on to public comment on the consent calendar. There, uh, we have no items on the consent calendar. So I will go into, um, public comment in general. Seeing no hands raised. We will go to next item five, Historic Resources Advisory Committee Appointments. Earlier this evening, we held interviews with our candidates for the vacant seats on the H R A C. At tonight's meeting, the Planning Commission may appoint two candidates to serve for a three-year term, which will expire May 31st, 2024. Do I have a motion from the commission? I'm looking for a motion to open the...
I'm, I'm, I'm happy to make a motion. I'm like, what, what am I moving? That we take the vote?
Um, yes.
Okay, I move that we, uh, vote on, um, by roll call vote that we move, um, appoint, uh, two, uh, seats on the Historic Resources Advisory Committee.
Great. Do I have a second?
Second.
So I have a motion by Commissioner Hunter and a second by Mr. Martinez. Uh, roll call, please, Ms. Xline.
Yes, thank you, Chair Radcliffe. Um, a point of clarification.
Yep.
I believe that we need to include the names of the appointed H R A C members.
Before we vote?
Oh, so are there, will there be two motions?
I'm sorry, the way I'm, I'm reading this is we have a motion to open the, um, the appointment process? Am I misunderstanding?
Um, I, so I'm just trying to see, I think we could do one motion if that, if that works for you. Um, I believe we, I, we could do two as well. If, if it worked to do one, you could put it all into one motion. They just need to say the name, you just need to include the names.
Okay, so this evening, um, we are looking at appointing three candidates. We had interviews with three candidates. We are looking to appoint two positions. Uh, the candidates are Gregory Trimble, John Goldman, and Linda Marie Roche. And so can we, um, modify Commissioner Hunter's agenda, uh, motion to include those? Does, is that all right with you, Commissioner Hunter?
I'm happy to modify it.
And Commissioner Martinez?
Yes, me too.
Perfect. So roll call, so, um, as, um, Ms. Xline calls each commissioner, each commissioner will, um, signify your vote for this position.
Um, just to clarify one further time, thank you, Chair Radcliffe. Um, the, the two names of the candidates that you are appointing or to the two full-term seats would be included in the motion if you, that way we could do it in one motion if that would work for you.
Actually, this motion is to vote. It's not to...
Okay. Got it. And then you want to do a second motion? Okay.
Right.
I, I believe you could do one motion if you would like. If you would choose, if you'd like to do two motions, that's, we can do that. But if you would like to include it all into one motion with the names, you could do that.
So then it would be, um, sorry that I'm a little...
No, I apologize to you.
Um, so then the motion would be, if I, if I'm hearing you correctly, Mr. Commissioner Hunter's motion would be that we, um, move to, um, approve, uh, Mr. Don Goldman and Ms. Linda Marie Roche to the two open seats. Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, no, that would not, that wouldn't be our motion because we have three candidates.
Right, we have to vote.
So, I mean, all my motion, and I'm not, I, I think we're making this too difficult, but all my motion is, um, was to have a roll call vote.
Right.
Okay, and, and then you would like to make another motion and put forward your candidates?
Well, I mean, I could make a motion to have a roll call vote that we appoint two candidates out of Gregory Trimble, John Goldman, and Linda Marie Roche. I mean, yeah, we, the way you point to, to, we appoint two of those three people to, uh, these, these, uh, next terms.
Yeah, okay, thank you. So you can, okay, so, so first motion is just that you're going to take a vote. The second motion, um, is that you would like, you could each, uh, someone could make a motion and they could suggest two names, I believe. They could say, I put a motion forward to choose these two names. You don't, no.
Oh.
I'm, I'm sorry. I'm sorry because, um, it's so hard because you have not gone through this.
Yeah, I, I apologize. Let me, tell me how to, tell me what to do.
That's okay. It's totally okay because you've never gone through this process with us. So I get, I think, um, we kind of have two different kind of expectations of what's going to happen.
Got it.
So what will happen, what we are used to is you will go through the roll call and each commissioner will say who they vote for.
Okay.
Tally the votes.
Okay.
And then we will, um, announce who the two highest vote-getters are.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
So I will take a roll call on the motion.
Motion that we open the meeting up to a vote and then you will do a roll call and each commissioner will give you two names.
Got it. Okay, so, so this motion is just to take a vote. The first motion is just to take a vote for two candidates.
Correct.
Okay, so I will take a roll call on that item.
Perfect.
Commissioner Mounier.
Yes.
Commissioner Martinez.
Yes.
Commissioner Schu.
Yes.
Vice Chair Hunter.
Yes.
Chair Radcliffe.
Yes.
Thank you. That motion passes.
And so now we will go through the roll call and you will call each commissioner and the, each commissioner will give you two names to vote on.
Thank you.
Sorry, it's a new process for you, so it's...
Thank you. Thank you for your patience. Commissioner Mounier.
Um, John Goldman and Linda Marie Roche.
Commissioner Martinez.
John Goldman and Linda Marie Roche.
Commissioner Schu.
Mr. Goldman, Ms. Roche.
Vice Chair Hunter.
Uh, Linda Marie Roche and John Goldman.
And Chair Radcliffe.
Uh, John Goldman and Linda Marie Roche.
Thank you.
So we'd like to welcome, uh, Mr. John Goldman and Ms. Linda Marie Roche to their appointment on the Historic Resources Board. I think, congratulations. Uh, next we will go on to our public hearing. This is item number 6A, 935 Durlston Road. And this is a request for an architectural permit to allow the construction of a 58-square-foot ground floor addition and a 414-square-foot second-story addition to a historic, non-designated, two-story, single-family residence built in 1930 at 935 Durlston Road. I believe we have a staff recommending, uh, presentation. Sorry, I, sorry, sorry, I'm distracted here. Can you hear me okay? Hello?
Thanks. I had to bring myself off, sorry.
Oh, okay. Um, so we're actually doing this from Mexico, so I hope that our connection, um, does not get uninterrupted. So I'm going to cross my fingers. Um...
Excuse me, um, we are waiting for our staff to present. Can I ask you to mute yourself? Okay, thank you. I think...
Correct, staff goes first.
I think that was maybe a, a public comment.
Yeah, I believe that was the applicant, um, Erin, I'm not sure, but, um, as, yeah, the applicant will get opportunity to present also following the staff presentation. Um, but, um, yeah, to get moving right along here, thank you, Chair Radcliffe, and good evening, members of the Planning Commission and members of the public. Uh, my name is Evelyn Garcia and I am the planner that was assigned to review and process the architectural permit for 935 Durlston Road, again, for the construction of new additions to an existing, uh, historic, non-designated, single-family residence. Uh, the Planning Commission is required to review applications for exterior modifications to historic, non-designated, uh, structures, designated, oh, non-designated structures and take final action on the application, which is why, uh, we are here this evening. And, uh, the applicant, again, is present on the call today. Uh, next slide, please. The site again is located at 935 Durlston Road. Uh, the properties owned are one and has a lot area of 11,370 square feet. Uh, the site is currently developed with an existing two-story, single-family residence that was built in 1930. And the home is, um, a Mediterranean Revival architectural style. Next slide, please. So the historic review process for historic properties involves the review of the application and historic reports in conjunction with the city's permit approval criteria as listed in the Historic Preservation Ordinance in the Municipal Code and the Architectural Permit Findings as outlined in the zoning ordinance. Uh, review of the application is followed by a two-step process as outlined here. Um, the H R A C reviews the application and provides a recommendation to the Planning Commission and the Planning Commission, again, reviews and takes final action on the project as stated earlier. Uh, next slide, please. So the project asked for poses for the construction of a 58-square-foot ground floor addition and a 414-square-foot second-story addition located towards the rear of the property to the existing two-story, single-family residence. Uh, here are the existing and proposed front elevations. There are no exterior modifications to the front elevation and the red here, um, box shows the location of the second-story addition as seen from the, as seen from the front sided, um, towards the rear of the property. Next slide, please. Here are the existing and proposed rear elevations. Here you'll note exterior modifications, which include a new gable vents and steel glass, uh, windows and doors and new tile roof gable to match the existing. Next slide, please. Here are the existing and proposed right side elevations. Here you'll note modifications, which include new gable with new tile roof to match the existing and also new steel, uh, new glazed steel windows. Next slide, please. Here are the existing and proposed left side elevations. Here you'll note modifications, which include a new tile roof gable extension to match the existing and new glazed steel windows that will match and remain consistent with the exterior. Very minimal changes. Uh, next slide, please. So there are four criteria for local landmark designation as listed here. Uh, the applicant submitted a historic evaluation, which concluded that the home is eligible, eligible for local historic landmark designation under criteria C as shown here in bold. Um, it embodies extensive characteristics of a shape, of a style, type, period, or method of construction, or is a valuable example of the use of indigenous materials or craftsmanship. According to the historic evaluation, the structure is an outstanding example of the Mediterranean Revival style with a number of contributing features, um, including the stuccle surface, the tile roof, the wooden door with ornamental hardware and steel sash windows, amongst other additional features will, um, which will all be retained and maintained. Uh, the project does not include a formal designation request at this time, um, but with the evidence that the home has historic significance, the home is treated and is recognized as a historic, non-designated structure. Next slide, please. So the proposed additions to historic, non-designated structure, uh, non-designated home are evaluated under the permit approval criteria outlined in the Redwood City Municipal Code and the Secretary of Interior Standards. This is done just to ensure that the proposed project is compatible and does not adversely affect the historic integrity and the character of the existing home. Um, a second historic evaluation, um, is done so that, um, it reviews under these two criteria. And so the historic evaluation submitted finds that the proposed project will not adversely affect the historic integrity of the architectural character of the existing structure. Um, the addition is designed to be consistent with the size and scale of the neighborhood. Um, the addition also incorporates, as mentioned earlier, matching exterior materials, matching exterior materials, colors, matching windows, styles, and roof type. And the architectural features, um, construction techniques, and the craftsmanship, again, that characterize the property will be maintained and preserved, um, on the proposed additions. Next slide. And so because the project includes a second story addition, the project is also subject to the architectural permit findings. And the project meets the architectural permit findings in that the design includes recesses and step backs to provide articulation and break up the first and second story messing. The design includes architectural features to retain the architectural integrity of the historic structure. Um, again, with the matching roof slopes and the Spanish tile, um, the rough textured stuccle and the, and the steel sash windows. Um, and the additions are proposed towards the rear and along the side of the property, creating a very minute, very minimal visual impact to the streetscape frontage. Next slide, please. So the project is also evaluated for general plan consistency. The general plan, um, is a document that lays out, uh, the goals and policies for the built environment in Redwood City, which also includes, um, historic resources. Uh, the project, in this case, meets general plan goal for the built environment, B E 37, which is intended to protect, preserve, restore, and rehabilitate and enhance historic resources. And the proposed additions, as stated in this presentation and further detail, again, in the staff report, are designed to protect and preserve the existing home and the characteristics and the details of the house that would contribute to the historical integrity of the structure. Next slide, please. So the Historic Resources Advisory Committee reviewed the application and historic reports at their August 4th, um, 20, sorry, not August, April, April 4th, 2021, um, public hearing and recommends that the, um, architectural permit, um, located at 935 Durlston Road, um, is approved by the Planning Commission. Next slide, please. And so with that, staff recommends that the Planning Commission conduct a public hearing, review the proposed project and historic evaluations and adopt a resolution recommending that the Planning Commission, or adopt a resolution approving the proposed project at 935 Durlston Road. And that concludes my presentation, um, and I'm open for questions. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much, Ms. Garcia, for your presentation. Any, um, clarifying questions from the Commissioners, if you'd raise your hand? Commissioner Hunter.
Thank you. I just have a very quick question. Uh, when the, um, H R A C met and approved this, what was their vote? Was it a unanimous vote?
Uh, yes, their vote was unanimous.
Great, thank you.
Any other Commissioners clarifying questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll go on to the applicant, which I believe is hoping for a good connection with us tonight.
Yes, hi, my name's Erin. I'm sorry, I, you know, like I said, I, I was distracted and I thought you were asking me a question so earlier, so I apologize for interrupting. Um, so, yeah, I don't have any formal presentation tonight. I just, you know, want, I'd like to thank the Planning Commission for giving us this opportunity to speak and for considering our project that Evelyn just summarized. Um, basically, I just want to take a few minutes of your time to talk about why, why this remodel is important to my husband and I and, um, the process that we went through to arrive at the plans that Evelyn just showed you. So I will go over, um, some of what she talked about, but I just want to provide a little more context and details for this remodel that, you know, obviously she wouldn't know about. So, um, so we'd obviously definitely recognize that we have a beautiful historic home in Redwood City. And while it is important to us to maintain its historical integrity as much as possible, it's also equally important to us that we update the functionality of our homes to meet today's living standards and spaces. And just to give you a few examples, um, so on the lower, the main floor, we have a bedroom that is right in the middle of the downstairs main living areas, so it's in a very awkward space. And it does not, um, provide a well-thought-out floor plan in terms of floor functionality. We have no master suite. We have no designated laundry area. We have, um, very poor access to our backyard to enjoy our outdoor living space. We basically have to go out through our driveway, through a breezeway to get to the backyard. Um, we want to, um, adopt an improved floor plan for, uh, better light flow within the house, as well as better accessibility from room to room. And we want to alleviate a lot of the dark hallways, isolated rooms, and extra spaces or depths, depths, sorry, that, um, are between, in between our walls that are, you know, these things are often very prevalent in these older homes. And so we did review several different renovations that our architect, Jerry Winches, who is also here tonight, um, he carefully designed to integrate really beautifully into the current architecture of our home, as well as what the lot, our lot parameters were, while, while being the least intrusive and budget-friendly. So after reviewing all these plans with Jerry, the one that Evelyn presented to you tonight proved overwhelmingly to be the least invasive to the home while, while still accomplishing our goals of, yeah, seamless architectural continuity, improved traffic flow and functionality. Um, so in addition to these key improvements that, and that I just went through that we wanted to make in our home, um, I also want to relate some other important considerations that this model, remodel will address for us. So, um, the rear of our house, um, was renovated very poorly in the past by the previous owners and it does not fit in well at all with the rest of the house. There was very little thought put into it and it looks very last minute. Um, so the, as, um, well, I don't know if Evelyn mentioned this or not, but, uh, the historian, historian's report designated this area of our house as having no historical significance. And this is the area that will be the most affected by the remodel. Um, so the result will be a very beautiful and cohesive addition that meets the historic guidelines that you have talked about and also greatly improves the appearance as well as the function of our home. Um, additionally, we're going to be adding French doors at several access points so we can better enjoy our backyard both from within and outside our home. And then this, these, adding these doors will also improve the light flow within, um, the downstairs. So, uh, as I mentioned, we took great care to come up with a plan that would be the least intrusive to changing the front elevation of our home. So this new rear addition, because most of the remodel is in the rear part of the house, pretty much all of it is, um, it extends along the already existing second-floor bedroom gable. And the peak of the new gable over the master bedroom is a little bit lower than the existing main gable of the house. And it's also located well behind the front elevation. And so what this means, or the net result of this, is that, um, that the second-floor addition will, will barely be seen by a person that is standing or driving by on the street in front of our home. Uh, the beautiful architectural lines and elements of our classic covered Spanish balcony on the second story, on the front part of our house, which is, um, which is one of, it's one of the outstanding features of our home, I think. Um, so that, as well as existing gabled roof over our living room and all the portions in the front of the house, um, and also on the, the sides of the house from, that are seen from the street will remain as-is and there will, there will not, nothing will be changed with any of those elevational parts. Um, we did, as Evelyn mentioned, we did work with Bill Castora and Richard Patnod, who, they're both architectural historian consultants. And they wrote our first and second historical reports respectively. And they both reviewed and, uh, reviewed the plans and they wholeheartedly support the current renovation plans that were submitted to you. And additionally, um, as Evelyn did mention towards the end, the Historical Resource Advisory Committee unanimously approved our plans on April 8th. So we have been very careful, um, in, during the planning and designing of all the elements that are going to be going into the new remodeled part of our home to use different but compatible materials in details that will distinguish the original construction from the new construction. And, um, you can see these, um, I believe in the notes, there's an addendum in the notes that shows, um, some examples of what we would do. And also Jerry Winches, our architect, is available, um, if you should have any questions. Um, and so with that, I just want to thank you again for your time and just wrap it up with that, and we're happy to answer any other questions that you might have.
Great. Thank you for your presentation, Ms. Miranda. Are there any, um, questions from the Commissioners? Okay, seeing none, I will, uh, move on to the public hearing. Following a procedural change for public comment in line with city council hearings, you will no longer, uh, read written comments into the record. You will take public comment from those joining through Zoom. If you have logged into Zoom through your computer, please click the raised hand button. If you have dialed in, please enter nine and then, uh, six to unmute your microphones when prompted. You may begin speaking once you have been called on. And in order to see how many speakers we have from the general public, if I could ask for a raised hands, please. I am seeing no raising of hands from our public. I am seeing no raising of hands from our public. So I will now close the public hearing. And we will open it at the meeting up to the commissioners discussion. Commissioners? Commissioner Shu. Commissioner Shu, you need to unmute?
Well, I have. Thank you. I was trying to start my video.
All these challenges we have tonight.
Doesn't seem to be cooperating.
There we go.
Oh, thank you. I would simply like to say that I find the project as presented and described by the applicant commendable and much appreciated. And I would be happy to move staff recommendation in its entirety for further consideration or discussion. Thank.
Thank you, Commissioner Shu. So I am taking that as a motion. So I have a motion from Commissioner Shu and Commissioner Hunter.
I fully agree with Commissioner Shu's comments, and I will second that motion.
Great. So I have a motion and a second, Commissioner Shu and Commissioner Hunter. Can we do a roll call, please, Ms. Exlon?
Yes. Commissioner Monier.
Yes.
Commissioner Martinez.
Yes.
Commissioner Hunter?
Yes.
And Commissioner Radcliffe?
I believe we have, we need Commissioner Shu.
Oops, I apologize. Commissioner Shu?
Yes.
And Commissioner Radcliffe?
Yes. Great. So the motion unanimously passes. Congratulations to the Mirandas. And just want to say that your house is beautiful. I walk by it all the time. So we're excited to watch this whole process. And would also like to encourage you to possibly look at obtaining the Mills Act for your home. So that could be.
Yes. Thank you so much. And actually, that is something that we will definitely consider. Absolutely. But thank you for your votes. We really appreciate it.
We're excited. Thank you. And now we will go on to item 6B, 2603 Broadway. This is a request for an architectural permit and use permit for modification and increase in height of existing telecommunication, our communication facilities on a building of historic interest in downtown precise plan. Staff, I believe we have.
Hey, yeah. Good evening. Can you hear me all right, Chair?
Thank you, Mr. Hughes.
Thank you. Good evening, H, Planning Commission members and to the public. My name's Sam Hughes. I'm the project planner managing the planning review for 2603 Broadway. This project involves an expansion of an existing rooftop wireless cell site. So the entitlement sought are an architectural permit and a conditional use permit. And this public hearing is a requirement for reviewing the application. The project is located on a building of historic interest, as noted in the downtown precise plan. The subject site is not a formally designated historic resource, but it is eligible to be listed as called out in the precise plan. The proposal would be visible from the street, and we'll see slides in the future that show the existing and proposed conditions. So under chapter 40 of the municipal code, such a project needs to be reviewed by the Historic Resources Advisory Committee, who makes a recommendation to the Planning Commission. And the H R A C has reviewed this project and has recommended approval of the application to the Planning Commission. And next slide, please. So this is a satellite image shown of 2603 Broadway, which is currently a group fitness center and office building on the second story on Broadway between El Camino and Caltrain. 2603 Broadway was first built in 1937 and is known traditionally as the Andrew Building. It was originally used as a bank. It's art deco. It's an art deco style building. And we'll see photos of the building in later slides. So records of rooftop wireless antennas and equipment at the site date back to at least 1997. And they've been replaced and approved upon throughout the years. At the onset of the downtown precise plan, it was noted that the property is eligible for listing as an historic resource. And so improvements and alterations to the rooftop wireless equipment have been subject to the review since 2011 accordingly, as established in chapter 40 of the municipal code. Next slide, please. So this slide shows the existing rooftop antennas enclosed within a fiber reinforced polymer box or FRP box. So the FRP box, what that does is screens the antennas from view and can be painted to match the existing building while not impacting the clarity of the cellular service or the service transmissions. There's also some ground floor equipment that you can see on the, on the bottom of this slide. So this would be right next to House Stop at the rear of the building, which would be, is visible from California Street. Next slide, please. So this slide shows the proposed wireless facilities. You can see there are three sites proposed for three vectors or three directions of signals as close to the building edges as the setbacks will allow to maximize the effectiveness of the wireless service. You will also notice ground floor accessory equipment, which is existing and will have some improvements associated with the project. And it's fenced off as well. It'll be fenced off, security fencing. And next slide, please. So this slide shows the existing conditions from Broadway, actually a little bit behind Broadway, close to the Caltrain tracks. So this central box will be removed. And we'll go to the next slide, please. This slide shows the proposal. So there will actually be two FRP boxes for two different vectors for the signals located as close to the building edges as the setbacks will allow. And the third cell site is at the rear and it's not visible because it's covered by the tree, but it would be visible from the ground at certain locations. And next slide, please. So this is again showing the existing conditions from a different location. Next slide, please. And the proposal from the same location right by the Caltrain tracks on Broadway. And next slide, please. And this shows the proposed project, the proposal from California Street, just behind at A1 Party Rentals. Next slide, please. So I'm going to move into analysis of the zoning and municipal code requirements. So first is the downtown precise plan, standards and guidelines. So this shows, these were outlined more extensively in the staff report, and I'll just give a cursory review at this point. So the standards need to be adhered to, and the guidelines are less concrete, and the deviations can be allowed if processed accordingly. So it's important to note also, though, that the project is not considered an addition, since there's no new floor area or building massing being added. And rooftop equipment is traditionally not been considered an addition. Traditionally in Redwood City. Accordingly, the project does not need to comply with all of the standards and guidelines because of this. And, but we are able to establish substantial compliance with the standards nonetheless. They maintain that the exterior of the building needs to be preserved, and the equipment is clearly separate from the main building, but will be painted to match the building. And it'll be not very visible from the street, but still visible nonetheless. Painting the boxes to match the building is the same as the existing conditions. So the change will not be very impactful in that regard. Next slide, please. So these are the historic resources permit approval criteria. Note that these criteria are not required to be made because the site is not a designated historic resource, but we have discussed them in the staff report to show that the project could still meet them. And staff has proposed the recommended findings of the criteria outlined in the staff report. So the art deco features that define the building would not be altered, destroyed, or adversely affected by the work proposed. And the wireless facilities would be screened by the FRP boxes and would be set back at least 10 feet from the roof line on all sides. It would not impact any of the existing architectural features that are notable for the art deco style. And the project conforms to all of the historic preservation standards in the downtown precise plan. The FRP screening box would also be painted beige to match the existing color of the building. Next slide, please. So with that, since the project conforms to the wireless ordinance and the requisite findings can be made, and the H R A C as well as planning staff recommend that the Planning Commission approve the architectural permit and use permit for this wireless cell site expansion. And this concludes the staff presentation. I'll turn it back over to the chair and to the commissioners if they have any questions.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Hughes, for your presentation. Are there any clarifying questions from the commissioners? Seeing none. Mr. Hughes, do we have a presentation from an applicant at this point, or?
I'm sorry, the applicant's not able to attend this evening, as far as I know.
That's fine. No worries. Wasn't sure. In that case, I would like to open this up to a public hearing. And as before, I think you've all heard my requests about the public hearing. Anyone who wishes to speak, if you could raise your hand? Okay, no hands are raised. So then I will go, close the public hearing, and we will go to our questions and discussion among the commissioners. Commissioners? Okay, seeing that none of you are raising your hand, I am going to take that. Ah, Mr. Shu, Commissioner Shu, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I see this as a fairly straightforward project, and I would happy to entertain other discussion, but for the purpose of moving the item forward for our commission, I would move staff's recommendation in its entirety. Thank you.
Thank you for the motion, Commissioner Shu. Do I have a second? Mr. Hunter?
Sure. I was hoping someone would make that motion, and I would be happy to second it.
Great. So I have a motion by Commissioner Shu and a Hunter, a second by Commissioner Hunter. Could we, Ms. Exlon, could we do a roll call, please?
Yes. Commissioner Monier.
Yes.
Commissioner Martinez.
Yes.
Commissioner Shu?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hunter?
Yes.
And Chair Radcliffe?
Yes. Great. Motion passes. We will look for better communications on the corner of Broadway in California. Next, we will be moving on to matters of commission interest. Are there any commissioners with any updates? I'm not seeing any hands. So let's go to staff. Any staff updates that we would like to hear?
It's going to go through the upcoming Planning Commission agenda items.
Great.
On June 15, we will go over Planning Commission work plan. And the second item is accessory dwelling units or ADUs.
Once again, okay.
Yes. The July 6 meeting is canceled. And we will be back on July 20.
Perfect. Great. We have a little bit of work ahead of us. Great. Thank you very much, Ms. Exlon. Any other comments? If not, I am going to adjourn tonight's meeting. And that is the conclusion of the Planning Commission meeting for June 1. We will re-adjourn on June 15, 2021. Thank you. Have a good evening.